Good evening and welcome to our December 14th Transportation and Parking Commission meeting. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Kirkjian.
Here.
Commissioner Yakupian.
Here.
Commissioner Sahakian. Commissioner Bartruso.
Here.
Chairperson Gonzalez.
Here. So, if you would please, Ms. McGlerion, start us on the flag salute.
Of course.
Please stand.
Stand.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, peaceful, with liberty and justice for all.
Good, thank you. So, we're going to go to, are there any oral communications? We have one request, if I'm not mistaken, right? Just one. Mr. Weissman, please. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners, city staff, and I guess I'm the only public here tonight, except for the vast throngs watching on GTV6. My name is Bill Weissman, and I am from far north Glendale. And the reason I'm here tonight is I want to talk a little bit about the recirculation of the draft EIR for the Verdugo Hills Golf Course project. Now, for those of you that may not be familiar with the Verdugo Hills Golf Course, it is right outside the western boundary of the city of Glendale, up in the far north area where I live. In fact, it's at the corner of Tahunga Canyon Boulevard and Latuna Canyon. And the Glendale city line at that point is Lowell. And Lowell is one of the two streets that lead to on-ramps and off-ramps to the 210 freeway. There's Lowell and there's Pennsylvania. Those are the only two access points that are actually within the city of Glendale. And back in 2009, there was a proposal to develop the Verdugo Hills Golf Course property with a little over 220 single-family homes. And a draft EIR was written at that time, and in fact, the city of Glendale officially responded to that draft EIR with a letter expressing some comments and concerns, especially regarding traffic on Lowell Avenue. Lowell is a very busy street for several reasons. As I mentioned before, it is the gateway to the 210 freeway, one of the major ones in north Glendale. And also because of the Shomlien School on Lowell, during morning drop-off and afternoon pickup, there is additional congestion on the street. And one of the reasons the draft EIR from way back in 2009 is now being recirculated is because there were deficiencies in the traffic analysis of the original EIR that needed to be addressed. And my personal opinion, they haven't necessarily addressed them properly, but I felt that not only you as Commissioners, but any of the general public that are interested in traffic and transportation issues that affect the city of Glendale, they may wish to comment on this draft EIR. And it's a little bit problematic because we're in the middle of the holidays right now, and people generally have other things to do. And the comment period for the new recirculated draft EIR is only a 45-day comment period. I think there is some chance it may get extended, but that's not a sure thing. So, right now, the deadline is January 16th for any comments on the recirculated draft EIR for the Verdugo Hills Golf Course project. I intend to speak tomorrow night in front of the city council and ask them to please consider having the city, as they did back in 2009, prepare a formal comments on the draft EIR, especially regarding the traffic issues. There may be also issues regarding sewage, since the property is pretty much uphill from the city of Glendale, and as we all know, sewage flows downhill, but that's going off on a tangent. I really wanted to talk about the traffic issues. So, again, if you want more details or information about the draft EIR, or links to see the actual documentation, you can go to the Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council website. That is S-T-N-C dot org, O-R-G. There's actually going to be a meeting tomorrow night in Sunland Tahunga at the Elks Lodge on Commerce to discuss, mostly to give area residents a little bit of an introduction on how to respond to a draft EIR, and why they should respond to a draft EIR. There are a lot of concerns from the Los Angeles side of the Glendale border that Tahunga Canyon Boulevard, which is already considered an unsafe road because it's narrow and twisty and has blind corners, is going to be severely impacted, as well as the intersection of Lowell and Honolulu in Glendale. So, thank you very much for your time and attention, and just wanted to let you know. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, I have a question to City Attorney. How much jurisdiction do we have, knowing the fact that that's in LA? It's not a Glendale property.
Yes, as far as it would affect where the boundaries are, we could have input on that portion.
But it's not, none of, any portions of the Golf Course is in Glendale. It's completely in LA, isn't it?
I could answer that.
Yes, please. Go ahead. We can...
Yes, Commissioner Kirkjian, you're right. It is in the city of LA. However, if you look at the draft EIR, they have identified a number of key intersections that are likely to be affected, maybe not significantly affected, but possibly significantly affected. And a number of those intersections are within the city of Glendale. Lowell and Honolulu is one of those intersections. Pennsylvania and Foothill and other intersections within the city of Glendale are deemed by the lead agency, which is, in this case, the city of Los Angeles Planning Department, to have potential significant impacts on traffic. And so, that's the reason. You are correct. It is within the city of Los Angeles, but it is going to affect traffic in the city of Glendale.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Weissman. Okay, hearing no objections, we're going to move to Agenda Item Number Four. Mr. Alan Loomis on a presentation on the downtown mobility study.
Chairperson Gonzalez, members of the commission, as you mentioned, Alan Loomis is here to give a presentation on the downtown mobility study. This was, the study took place in 2007 as a backup to the downtown specific plan, and he's going to describe a little bit about the plan, the implementation, and where we're headed. So, with that, I will turn it over to Alan.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Happy holidays to you. Guessing your last meeting before 2016. The presentation you're going to see that you now have distributed on the dais was presented to the city council in November of this year at the council's request. And following our presentation to the council, Public Works Director Galanian suggested the TPC would probably have an interest in hearing this. So, you're going to get exactly the same presentation the city council heard. It's not been amended in any ways. As you can see, it's even got the title of the presentation as November 5 to, or November 3 to the city council. So, with that, I'll just sort of jump straight in. I think I'll jump straight in.
While you're doing that, Alan, can you comment as you go through if there was any outcome of any action items from the city council that either changed or set up something for next steps?
Sure, absolutely.
Please.
Yeah, so, as you can see, this was the, this is the overview, the agenda of what we're going to discuss, and the action that came out of it is the very last bullet. So, we'll kind of touch upon that in terms of an immediate action that resulted at that particular hearing. There was a broad direction from the city council that I can touch upon as we go through in terms of items that they wanted some further follow-up on, or some further discussion or analysis done. But at this point, we haven't scheduled that analysis, or we don't have anything forthcoming on certain topics. But generally, we'll look at the 2007 mobility study, which, as we stated, was done at the same time as the 2006 downtown specific plan, and really intended to support that document, the specific plan. So, a good chunk of this conversation is about where the mobility study stands in terms of its implementation. There's some discussion here about one-way streets modeling, and then a discussion about kind of some new technologies that didn't exist in 2007 or weren't on radar screen at that time. Fairly extensive discussion about kind of regional transit as it exists today and as is being actively planned, and then diving into kind of how our local B-line fixed route transit system sort of plays into that regional transit. And then the last item, the downtown mobility report card, was the specific action that came out of this meeting. So, yeah, I think I'm going to have to ask. Can I still ask? That'll work. So, I have two slides here, and I'm going to jump straight to the next one and then back. So, this is a reflection coming out of the current traffic, this current traffic model we have for the city about the kinds of trips that are generated in Glendale under today's traffic model, which is calibrated against existing data, and then kind of what the projection looks like into 2030 when you aggregate all the sort of growth that SCAG expects around the region, as well as internally within Glendale. And so, this is kind of the entire number of daily trips that you might be looking at in terms of the raw numbers, which really aren't terribly important. It's more the proportionality that is really interesting. So, if you look at this, we're pretty evenly balanced today between trips that drive into the city limits, trips that drive out of the city limits, and trips that are generated that stay internally within the city. So, you can see just the percentage-wise, 40%, 21%, 39%. It's a pretty even balance. And when we project the model forward up to 2030 numbers, the situation gets a little bit better in that more of the trips occur internally within the city. It sort of bumps up a little bit to 26%. So, if we talk about jobs-housing balance, which is always a critical thing when we talk about land use planning and transportation, Glendale's actually in a pretty good place. We're pretty evenly split between trips happening that basically stay inside the city limits, and that would be folks maybe who live here, whose jobs are here, versus people coming into the city, people who live outside of the city but their jobs are here, or Glendale residents who are driving outside the city limits for their jobs or their kind of business purposes. So, basically, today, we're pretty evenly balanced as we project forward with all the growth. We don't really expect to see a dramatic change. This is pretty good sort of ratio, I would say. I mean, I think if you sort of compared this to maybe a city, you know, in the inland empire, you'd probably see a lot more trips going out on a daily basis than coming in or staying internal within the city. So, just as a kind of regional sort of picture of what the transportation, the kind of trip generation looks like. So, coming out to the downtown mobility study, as I said, this was adopted in 2007 with the downtown specific plan that was developed at the same time by largely the same team, really intended to support one another. And the message that we gave to the city council, I'd give to you, is that this plan has essentially been implemented since 2007. Well, when it was adopted in 2007, it came with a long chart of implementation actions. The vast majority of those implementation actions have been accomplished over the past nine years, with the exception of some very capital-intensive projects that in the mobility study were put on the 10-year kind of calendar. And those are things like improvements to freeway off-ramps or new investments into transit resources.
Can you go back, please, to number five, Alan? Yeah.
This one, or?
No, page five.
Okay, page five.
Just parenthetically, it's kind of interesting, is the transportation, public transportation I see in that visual, is that on Brand Boulevard looking north?
It is. That is probably a California. That was, that's the cover of the downtown mobility study, which is a highly stylized photograph from the 1940s or 30s of the red cars running up and down Brand Boulevard.
Thank you.
No, not, excuse me. We go back, these cars that are entering and exiting the city, does that include the freeway transits? Also, people who are actually exiting and entering within the city streets?
It's a map of all trips that are generated within the city. So, the way the traffic model works is that particular kinds of uses have, they generate trips themselves, and then other, like a residential, any sort of residential land use generates a trip out, but then there are other activities that generate trips that are attractions, like jobs, for example. So, this is a measure of all trips throughout the entire city, regardless of where they come from or enter the city, whether they cross a San Fernando Road, or they get off at the freeway.
No, I'm talking about people who are on the freeway, never get out, exit the freeway. They're just continued driving on the freeway.
Right, so this probably doesn't consider those as kind of trips in this model, because they're just passing through the city.
That's true, okay.
This is trips that have a destination or in, a beginning or a destination endpoint that is within the city.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Just quickly back to that visual, as you're going through, you'll notice, if I'm not mistaken, there are two tracks, and there's one going up to Mountain, probably, right?
Yeah, the terminus of that line was at Mountain.
Right.
Yeah. And then there was a switch, and there was a different line that headed up Glen Oaks. And this used to be the line you could take all the way into downtown LA.
Right.
A good portion of the right-of-way no longer exists in the downtown portion. So, the 2007 mobility study was a package of different recommendations in different areas of kind of policy and management and kind of physical improvements. So, you can just see them here. I'll kind of hit on some of these as I move through in terms of what was done. One of the key things about it was parking management. One of my friends likes to say that free parking is an aphrodisiac for cars. So, how you control parking has a big impact on how people get around and how they move. And at the time we started this, as I'm sure the commission remembers, in 2006, 2007, you could park on Brand Boulevard for free up to two hours, and it was dependent on the meter maid or mister coming along and chalking your tires, and then coming back two hours later and giving you a ticket, and you sort of not wanting to get the ticket being the motivation for you to park somewhere else. And the downtown merchants were actually the strongest proponents of introducing paid parking on Brand Boulevard, because what they saw was it was their neighbors' employees who were parking in the spot in front of them, not their customers, and every two hours, their employees would get a break and move their car somewhere up the street. And so, in 2007, it was virtually impossible to find parking on Brand Boulevard. It was running at about 95% occupancy in the on-street parking spaces on Brand Boulevard. Meanwhile, our garages where it was free to, or where you actually had to pay to park, were sitting generally empty. So, in terms of the supply and demand sort of economics, everything was upside down. So, one of the first recommendations was charge for parking on Brand Boulevard by introducing the meters and provide the 90 minutes free in the garages. So, try and really push people who are going to be in the downtown for any length of time into the public parking garages. And the advantage of that is that once you get out of the garage, then you become a pedestrian, and you're walking around the downtown and along the way to your destination, your restaurant. You might walk past another shop. So, it really began to promote the sort of 18-hour downtown, pedestrian-oriented downtown. That was the goal of the downtown specific plan and many other policies. So, that's the idea of a park once, that when you drive into a downtown environment in downtown Glendale, you should park once and do the rest of your trips on foot until you're ready to leave the downtown, rather than sort of expecting that you're going to drive a couple of blocks and find free parking in front of your next destination. So, that was the policy goal. And as I said, the first sort of mechanism to sort of try and accomplish that was the installation of the parking meters on Brand Boulevard and the creation of the 90 minutes free in the city's parking garages. That has been very, very successful. This is, was really modeled after a very thick academic tome called "The High Cost of Free Parking" by UCLA professor named Don Shoup. Almost within months after these parking meters went in, this policy went in, Don Shoup was starting to talk about us in his lectures as being the case study of what should be done. It was pretty astonishing. The parking availability on Brand Boulevard went down to 85% occupancy. And by that ratio, pretty much every block, you should be able to find one empty parking space. At this point, the parking occupancy is actually going up, so people are willing to pay the cost of parking on Brand Boulevard in order to have that convenience. So, there's been some pretty strong kind of results out of that. The other thing that we did that was recommended out of the mobility study was to reform our permit parking district. I'm sure the commission knows that a good portion of your work is dealing with permit parking, and it tends to be block by block as opposed to sort of as a larger neighborhood district. And when we looked at South Brand Boulevard, we adopted an ordinance that, as you'll recall, created predefined districts around South Brand Boulevard of cars, so that as preferential parking district applications came in, they would sort of institute these different districts in that, rather than being able to just simply park on one block, you'd be able to park anywhere in that district.
Is it fair to say, then, the money that the city invested to put this in, if you were to look at it on a life cycle cost analysis, has been more than paid for?
I'd probably defer to the Public Works administration staff on that. I think we're probably catching up at this point. There's a pretty high capital cost to sort of enter into this. Do you know, Shay?
Chairperson Gonzalez, I don't know offhand whether or not we have made that up yet. Those, the pay stations were very expensive when we initially purchased them, so I would venture to guess that we maybe aren't there yet, but we can certainly provide that information to you later.
I think it would be good to know if it's easy to get, it would be very curious, because it's, you know, a lot of this is happening in other areas, and it is quite successful. And it does strengthen the park once concept.
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll reach, we'll get there eventually, but, you know, we've been purchasing new pay stations for our, recently for our surface lots, so, you know, we didn't just finish with the streets.
Streets. Thank you.
Sure.
So, moving on to that, as Shay was saying, we're implementing pay stations in the lots and also in the garages, and it will also begin to extend out onto the streets. So, we have a fairly decent-sized grant from Metro for wayfinding purposes. So, the pay here station, the kind of graphics to tell you where to go to the garages, that is all going to start rolling out, out onto the streets, starting early next year. You can see the beginning of it at the Marketplace Garage. If you've been to the Marketplace Garage recently, it's sometimes difficult to get in and out because they're doing construction on that. Part of that is updating all three of the city's parking structures with the pay before you leave credit card system, so that when you take your ticket, when you come back to the garage, you can pay for your parking before you get in your car, and then your ticket just sort of, then you can just move out. It's what the Americana has, for example. The other garages in the Marketplace until recently, you had to do a cash transaction with a cashier and a booth at the gate. So, on fairly large events, when lots of people are leaving the garages, you'd have pretty significant delay. So, behind the scenes is also upgrading all the technology that runs the garage, the software technology, and providing the real-time parking count. So, this will allow you to beam information out. So, part of the wayfinding system will be at each one of the garage entrances, will be a digital countdown display that will tell you how many parking spaces are available in that garage. That information will also be communicated out to signs at various key decision points on the city street network, so that you know if you're coming down Brand Boulevard, for example, whether you should keep driving straight in order to get to the Marketplace Garage, or maybe perhaps the Marketplace Garage says full, but it says 400 spaces available at the Orange Street Garage if you make a right. And then you can make a more informed decision about how you drive and where you go and where you park, as opposed to just pulling into the garage and hoping that you'll find parking. So, that system is all in the works right now, and as I said, the construction that's going on in the Marketplace Garage is the beginning of that technology being implemented into our, into the city. This technology, the software, also allows for the sort of, for that information to be beamed out into apps and onto websites, so you could even decide before you leave your house, you could look up and see where there's parking available in one of the two downs, three downtown structures.
Do those app apps now also work so that you can actually increase your time on the parking without having to go to the meter?
We actually already have that in place with these meters, so you can register your, there's a way you can register your cellphone, and it will actually text you and say you've got 10 minutes left, and if there's possible to add more time, because there's a time restriction, but if it's possible to add more time, you can say, yes, add me another 30 minutes, I'm not done shopping.
And that's happening on Brand now?
Yeah, that technology on Brand is in place right now. So, from a parking management standpoint, by June, July 4th of this coming year, we'll be caught up with the 21st century. It's been a long time coming. There's also a range of sort of soft policies in the mobility study related to transportation demand management. This is the sort of philosophy that, you know, perhaps rather than us providing the cost of building a new parking space for every vehicle and person that wants to come into the downtown, might be more effective to connect you with rides of somebody else who's already making that trip, and you could vanpool or carpool, for example. So, part of that was overhauling the city's TDM ordinances baked into the zoning code. When it was first put into place, it was the result of an AQMD, an air quality district kind of imposition that had since expired, so property owners were not required to join the TMA organization and participate in doing TDM programs. Now, in the downtown specific plan, projects over a certain scale are required, and that was put into place a number of years ago, right as the big building boom was beginning to take place. So, all the projects that are highlighted in that kind of neon-orange, or about 82% of the new units in the downtown, those projects are required to become TMA members. So, our local TMA organization, which is now called GO Glendale, has seen a pretty significant increase in membership. What's important about this is that they can provide the guaranteed ride home programs for employees, or, and we're not exactly sure how this will work for residents, but one of the other things that they are required to do is ridership counts on an annual basis. So, we're trying to figure this out with the TMA, with GO Glendale, how this is going to work in a residential project, but one of the things we'll be, potentially be able to ask is, for, if you're a resident in one of these new downtown apartments, do you walk to work? Do you take the bus? Do you drive to work? Or do you work? How many cars per household are you bringing in? All this kind of interesting kind of demographic data about how people behave is now required on an annual basis of these new developments. And moving forward, I think that's going to be a very useful data set for us to begin to judge policies on. The mobility study also talked a lot about transit infrastructure, and on this front, we have made some progress. A few years ago, the fare structure for our local B-line system was overhauled, I guess it was probably more than five years ago now. Another important fact was that we actually built our own compressed natural gas fueling facility. It's down by the train station. Previously, our B-line buses fleet was having to drive out to Burbank Airport to gas up and then drive back to park in Glendale, so there's a lot of dead time and a lot of gas and kind of expense being incurred with that trip. We now fuel the buses in Glendale. The downtown bus shelters have the real-time bus information, and we've been fabulously successful at getting grant funding, mostly through Metro, to purchase new buses. It's worth bragging here that the Glendale B-line is the first 100% CNG-fueled bus fleet and the first 100% low-floor bus fleet in LA County. So, we're kind of, we're actually quite progressive in that front. Moving forward, looking down in future, starting next year, we're hoping to begin construction on our own B-line maintenance facility. Right now, the B-line buses are parked in a leased warehouse off Los Angeles Street. If you've ever been there, early in the morning as the buses are rolling out, it's kind of amazing. They cram them all into this one small facility. It's really inadequate to run a modern fleet. So, beginning next year, we're hoping to start construction on a brand-new facility that will actually accommodate the fleet and possible expansion of the fleet. That'll be down by the train station. Another kind of key component in terms of new infrastructure, and I'll touch on this a little bit, a few slides forward, is the North Hollywood to Pasadena corridor. There's been a lot of talk, especially lately, about sort of connecting the Gold Line, Red Line Station in North Hollywood and near Burbank with the Gold Line and Station in North Hollywood and near Burbank with the Gold Line in Pasadena and kind of filling that missing gap. Metro is actually actively studying that corner, corridor for bus rapid transit right now and is instituting a pilot's kind of service in the near future. The mobility study talked a great, well, actually, the mobility study sort of touched upon pedestrian and bicycle improvements. As much as the downtown specific plan talked about it, pedestrian friendly oriented downtown, actually neither the mobility study nor the DSP really sort of, really had a lot of strong policies related to pedestrians and bikes. And so this is actually a case where what we've done over the past five years has leapt well beyond what that original two thousand and seven study had put in place, beginning with the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan of two thousand and eleven, which I know many of the commissioners were actively involved in, but then led to the adoption of the Bicycle Transportation Plan. So that has actually resulted in a pretty significant expansion of our bicycle infrastructure based on that plan. We do now biannual bike and pedestrian counts, obviously not across the entire city, but selected intersections. So we're seeing an increase in bike riding since we started these accounts. You can see, we've now installed twenty-eight miles of bike infrastructure according to that plan. There's a lot more to be done, of course. But we do have a little over five million dollars in funding, again, mostly from Metro to do a number of different actions, develop a pedestrian master plan that'd be done in conjunction with safe routes to school programs. We have funding to do Harvard and Louise's Green Street demonstration project. There's some pedestrian safety improvements built into that project, right near the downtown and Central Library. We have some funding from Metro to do what we're calling the Cerritos Last Mile First Mile Project. This is a pedestrian improvement project that will connect the train station with San Fernando Road. Most of the bus service, regional bus service at any rate, and South Glendale runs along San Fernando Road. And our train station is about three blocks hidden from all that bus service. So this project will provide some funding to do things like street trees and street lighting and kind of wayfinding signs to sort of help improve that, that relationship between the regional rail and the regional buses.
I should know the answer to this, but are you, do you know if the B line has the provisions for bicycles to be put on?
Yes. Yeah, all the, all the buses have the bike racks out from, yeah. We also have funding from Metro to do bike stations. And we're looking at bike share. There's a lot of interest in that. So there's some funding that Metro, Metro Call for Projects that sort of comes to fruition in a few years for bike stations. There's about three or four locations around the city identified for bike stations that then could be the foundation for a bike share program. So there's a lot of active work that's occurring on that front.
Question? Would you prefer questions now or after?
Up to the chair, I suppose.
I would like to propose that we can ask you questions if you go along, if you don't object.
No objections.
Is that okay with commissioners? Yeah, I think it allows for better dialogue. It gives you a chance to take a breath.
Yeah.
Alan, do you know where the potential bike stations could go? Or just off the top of your head, which you have in mind?
The three that I remember was down at the train station, Transit Center. There was one or two sites identified downtown. I think at one point, the Chess Park on Brand Boulevard was one of the options. But there's been a couple of other options under consideration in downtown. And I want to say possibly a GCC on the campus, the main campus. Those are the three that I remember. I think we had identified four, but.
Great. I know that the city wanted a developer to look at the feasibility of building a parking garage at the Metrolink Station. So I wonder if there's any, been any discussions with that developer to incorporate a bike station into that or not?
Not that I'm aware of. I haven't been involved in any of those discussions. I don't even know if, how much that has progressed since the council gave staff and that developer the okay to start exploring that option. I think as we've looked at the bike station and the, and at the Transit Center, I think we've had in mind one of the spaces in the historic structure that's sort of underutilized. I want to say there's like a storage closet that could be someplace else, but storing stuff that has nothing to do with transit, that might be a good location for it.
Okay. But this is, this is funding that we have currently that we're sitting on? Or this is something that?
It's money that we receive through Metro Call for Projects, but the funding doesn't start flowing for another two years, I want to say.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Metro Call for Projects, oftentimes you, you sort of submit your funding applications. That's a competitive grant program. You find out six months later whether you got the funding, but the funding maybe doesn't become available for another two or three fiscal years.
Got it.
So it's, we get very excited about getting this funding and then we realize it's a number of years before we're going to have to work on the project.
So your guess is twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen?
I want to say it's twenty seventeen is the timeframe for a bike share, or the bike stations.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. And on the bike share, chances are, we'll probably just partner up with Metro's program since Metro is unrolling, is rolling out a bike share program that they're piloting in downtown. I think they want to also expand into Pasadena. So we'll be surrounded by the Metro's bike share program. That probably makes the most sense just to sort of partner up with them ultimately.
I'm hoping that the, the discussions that we'll be having about the South Glendale Plan will kind of inform where the stations, the bikes, share stations and the bike station would go. Because there currently isn't much bike infrastructure on the streets. So I, that would kind of dictate, would dictate where bikes would be going, I hope.
Yeah. You know, on a bike share, Metro's kind of position has been they want to see a lot more infrastructure on the ground.
Right.
And when they've looked at Glendale, they were like, you've got a lot of good ambitions, but you need more actual infrastructure for people to safely bike before we're going to start investing in bike share.
That's my point.
So that's, that's another reason actually to sort of delay the bike share program a little bit down the road is it allows Public Works, as they implement the bike plan, to sort of get it done, mostly done so that it's substantive and interconnected as much as it can be. Yeah.
Thank you.
All that being said, the mobility study in two thousand and seven recognized that people still drive in Glendale, believe it or not. Despite all of our ambitions and improving our, our road network was an important kind of policy goal. So there's three major road projects in the downtown, starting with the reconstruction of Brand Boulevard. You'll remember that from ten years ago. It was a painful experience for everybody who was part of it because of the inherent disruptions that construction generates. All three of these streets were sort of, were identified in the downtown mobility study as necessary for improvements to sort of move cars central and Colorado in particular, because they connect to the freeway network more directly than most streets. What's really left to be done is there's a million, a little under two million dollars, as you can see, that's for the improvements at Monterey, Glendale, the freeway interchange there. There's some minor improvements in road resurfacing that's being planned by Public Works right now, associated with kind of street improvements. So as I said, we've largely believed that, you know, most of the major policy objectives or kind of implementation goals of the two thousand and seven mobility study have been implemented, except for some of the larger infrastructure moves that are very costly. And one of those includes some discussion of one-way streets. So one-way streets, you know, usually you would sort of, you would pursue one-way streets because it would improve traffic flow. And they're kind of typically done in a couple different, in kind of two different sort of fashions. One is that you would do a one-way pair, what's known as a couplet, that parallels a primary two-way street. And the example everybody probably knows very well is in Pasadena, where whether you're on Colorado or you're on Lake, the parallel streets on either side are running in opposite directions. So if you're on, on Colorado and trying to drive through Old Pasadena, you can always go one block to the south and you can take Green Street that takes you to, is a one-way street going eastbound. Union Street, which is north of Colorado, one-way going westbound. So there's sort of these traffic relief valves. So if you don't want to deal with the congestion of Colorado, there's a one-way street that can sort of speed you through the downtown, as it were, without the conflicting traffic. The other option that you typically see on one-way streets is Manhattan is a good example. But you see it to a certain extent in downtown LA, where you have a very regular street grid and the streets alternate every other direction. So in Manhattan, the odd streets all go in one direction and the even streets go in the opposite direction and the odd avenues go in one direction. Odd avenues go south and the even avenues go north. So, you know, that works pretty well because the, the street grid is so consistent, it's very easy to figure out when you're going to encounter a one-way street. The problem with one-way street options in Glendale is that we don't have any obvious street candidates because of the way our street grid is laid out. So there are a number of advantages and disadvantages. These were published in the two thousand and seven mobility study. Four one-way streets, I think I'll skip over these and show you sort of the options that we explored back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. So there's, there's northbound and there's southbound. Or sorry, there's north and southbound and then there's east and westbound options. So one-way street, a couplet, north and southbound, probably the obvious candidate is to go one-way south on Central, one-way north on Brand Boulevard. This has the advantage that you're connecting with a joined freeway off-ramp at the one thirty-four freeways, you know. It's Brandon Central is the off-ramp. So it doesn't matter which one of those off-ramps you get, you could either go north or south, or, you know, come or go from the downtown. This is not a terribly positive proposal for a number of reasons. Mostly it's an impact on the business community. One can imagine how the downtown merchants or the Americana or dealerships would react to something like this, where half of their traffic can, is no longer going to be able to access them. So this was not really seriously studied, but it was kind of the obvious one. The other one that people talk about quite a bit is Orange and Maryland. And so you'd be looking at Orange Street going southbound, Maryland going northbound. This is sort of the Pasadena model because Orange and Maryland are one block off Brand Boulevard, which of course is our, our main street. The problem here is that neither Orange nor Maryland take you to the freeway. So if the goal of doing a one-way street is to help alleviate congestion as it's coming off the freeway or on the freeway to your main street, neither one of these streets does the trick without some very expensive infrastructure improvements. Orange Street to connect to the freeway ramps would have to plow through a private garage and then build a bridge over the freeway. Maryland is even more difficult because you'd actually have to sort of divert Maryland to sort of get a flyover that could take you up and over the off-ramps west of Brand Boulevard. So it became very expensive to connect these two streets to the one thirty-four freeway. And because of the Central Park and the Galleria and the Americana, it's, there's probably no option of those streets ever connecting to Colorado to provide traffic relief coming off the I-5, which generally exits onto Colorado as it comes into downtown Glendale. So Orange and Maryland are not terribly effective candidates as sort of relief valves, because you still have to drive on Brand Boulevard in order to utilize either one of those streets as a one-way bypass. The other option that we looked at was Columbus, one-way south, and Louise, one-way north. These do go the full length from Colorado up to the freeway. Neither one of these actually connects you with the one thirty-four freeway or they do connect with Colorado. The disadvantage here is that you're starting to get so far removed from Brand Boulevard that probably you're not, the average driver isn't going to think to go three or four blocks away from their destination in order to find that one-way bypass street. And again, neither one of these streets connects you with off-ramps to the one thirty-four freeway. So that traffic still can't take advantage of this. So we kind of came to a conclusion that there really wasn't any viable candidates for northbound, or one-way streets going in a north and southbound direction. We looked at east-west streets. The first pair was Lexington and California. Lexington has a funky little jog that prevents it from connecting to San Fernando Road. So we only looked at it between Pacific and Glendale Avenue. And then we also looked at California and Wilson. This is probably the most promising alternative from an east-west direction. Both of these streets, pretty much straight shots connecting you to San Fernando Road to Glendale Avenue. So between San Fernando, Pacific, Brand Central and Glendale, you are picking up all of the major I-34 off-ramps in the city. So we did in fact, look at this in a little bit more detail. We actually modeled it in our traffic model that we had developed at the time. And what we found when we ran the traffic model is that we really didn't see any significant congestion relief by doing this one-way street pairing at California and Wilson.
What year was this model then?
Two thousand and six, two thousand and seven.
Excuse me, Alan. Now that you brought this model, where will, where are we with respect to Broadway and San Fernando closure and Duran closure? And how is that going to impact this? I mean, when, that was not around when?
No, it wasn't. We're actually in the process right now of updating our traffic model. The kind of underlying state-of-the-art technology and software that you use to run traffic models has changed in the intervening ten years. So we are currently building a new traffic model, which will include as actual facts, all the recent growth that in two thousand and six was merely projected in the downtown, will account for some changes in alignments in various streets. And I don't know specifically if we're modeling that Duran-Broadway closure. It's probably going to be modeled as a possible future network change. The model is kind of frozen as of the summer this year. If it didn't exist on the ground this year, it's not part of our baseline. Anything that's projected to happen in the future is part of our future modeling. So things like that would be included in the future model program.
Metro had meetings, several meetings in the last few weeks. I couldn't attend, there was, one of them, the last one was, it was held in Attwater and Glendale and a few other places. I couldn't attend them. Do you know what transpired? Or do you have any, do you have any idea what outcomes those meetings were?
No, I, I don't know because it wasn't, neither me nor anybody in staff were attending those meetings. I know that the Public Works Engineering Section is pretty actively engaged in Metro on this topic. My, from what I understand, they're expected to come out with a preferred alternative relatively soon, probably next year. That will be the basis, whatever that alternative is, will plug in as a network change into the model. As we sort of say, what does the future look like in terms of anticipated network changes? But being that we are updating our traffic model, it does allow us to revisit all sorts of discussions. We could revisit the one-way street pairing. We could run the updated model with the California-Wilson one-way street couplet and see whether there's any difference than when we ran it in two thousand and six and make an informed decision. So we may be back to the city council with this particular topic.
Well, my understanding is Salem is where they approached property owners in Salem to negotiate property and whatnot. So I think they're just, that's where they'll be coming off to or on from.
Yeah. And that obviously has an impact on the traffic model. That would potentially change today's conditions of how the street network operates. If you start closing access points and sort of opening up new access points, traffic potentially redistributes.
Is it fair to say, I'm sorry, go ahead. Is it fair to say that the one-way streets were off the table?
I think there are some council members that remain interested in seeing this being modeled again in the future. So this is one of those topic points that we will probably be coming back to the council when the new traffic model is done, with new runs on the updated traffic model and say, are we seeing the kind of traffic congestion relief that one would hope you'd see with one-way streets?
You know, there's pros and cons on these, as we all know. But one of the things that is a concern, I think, sometimes is in the interest of wanting to flow traffic faster, it really takes away, I think, the livability of a street, especially wide streets where you almost, you'll get to an intersection, you'll see five cars lined up, you know, ready for that green light. And you'll see a bunch of cars behind them and they pump it on and they go to the next one. And you get this flow going, but you lose the life of the street, I think. And while the name, the main objective is to keep the traffic moving, there's also, I think, a balance to that that would keep a street live so that it doesn't go so fast.
Right.
So it would be nice that if the, not nice isn't the right word. It would seem to be appropriate that if the one-way streets are shown on the table, there ought to be some type of study done as to what is the impact, what are the impacts of getting traffic to go faster and flow as opposed to really, you know, grind slower and reduce traffic, reduce the speed of traffic.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, and even if we sort of like come back and look at California and, and Wilson as an alternative, as a pairing, even if the traffic model demonstrates that there's potential congestion relief, that's going to have to be weighed against the, these kind of livability impacts. Both of those streets, there are only a portion of them running through the downtown. A good portion of them run through residential districts and neighborhoods. There's some pretty significant, you know, public works costs of sort of reconfiguring all the streetlights and everything. I mean, from a cost benefit analysis, it may not be worth the limited amount of congestion relief. And that'll have to be a policy discussion and kind of trade off to the city council.
A suggestion I would offer is that when these studies are done, that they not just be only engineers engaged with it, but also people that are versed in how to do better urban urban planning.
Yeah.
And if it's just engineering-driven, and it's all about getting the cars to go faster and quicker, I think we lose the livability of a downtown.
Right. There's also, and this, you know, in Glendale, this would be a pretty significant education campaign to sort of communicate to a driving public that is accustomed to certain streets being two-way, now all of a sudden they're one-way.
Right, right, right. But it kind of sounded like the one-way street is still potentially on the table for...
It's a, it's a potential on the table, but I don't know that it has strong support.
Okay.
We didn't get a strong read when we presented this from the entire council, that this was something they really were strongly interested in pursuing, these two alternatives that we sort of presented. The one that we did present that I think there is some interest in, and staff believes there's still some merit to sort of exploring, is the option of doing a one-way pair, parallel to the freeway on either side of the freeway. So the 134 freeway, as, well, it's the 210 when it gets to Pasadena, on either side of the street has a frontage road that allows you...
Sanchez and Good, you mean?
Yeah, in our case, it's Sanchez and Good, but only for that one block. But if you go to Old Pasadena, it goes for miles, so there's always this sort of relief of kind of queuing up onto the freeway. So staff thinks this has some merit, because a significant portion of our freeway, or our street congestion running north-south, particularly on the streets that serve the freeway, is cars queuing up to get on the freeway, because Caltrans meters those ramps, and the backup flows up onto Brand or Glendale or Central or Pacific. So, you see less of that in Pasadena, because that queuing action happens parallel to the freeway, before people say get onto the freeway at Lake, they can queue up along, parallel to the freeway, not on the north-south streets. So, and when we did the 2007 mobility study, we thought this idea had some merit. It's obviously very expensive to try and figure out how one accomplishes this in Glendale, where the, or where development and, in most cases, apartment buildings comes right up to the freeway right away, there really isn't a lot of room left to do this without beginning to acquire property. So this is one of those options that's in the mobility study that has yet to be implemented, because it's rather expensive. So, one of the ways we're exploring this is part of the Space 134 Freeway Cap Park project. In its grand scheme, the freeway cap park, which is the idea you basically put a roof over the 134 freeway where it's sort of running below ground, which is basically between Glendale and Central Avenue. Theoretically, it could be possible, or one of the options we're looking at, is that you could potentially accomplish those frontage roads as part of doing this project. It doesn't make a lot of sense to do a frontage road in this scenario if we can't figure out how to connect it to Glendale, the off-ramps at Glendale Avenue. And we don't really, at this point, have a kind of good schematic for how that would all work, but it's something we'll probably continue to try and explore. The reason I say that is that downtown traffic coming off of Brandon Central, let's say, particularly traffic that wants to go eastbound, if it has to run on a frontage road that doesn't connect it to the Glendale off-ramps or on-ramps, that's all well and good until it reaches maybe Geneva, and then it has to dogleg onto Geneva, back into the residential district, onto Duran, to get back onto Glendale Avenue. So it doesn't make a lot of sense if this frontage road can't connect you straight onto the off-ramps on the ramp to Glendale.
Alan, if I can just jump in. So, the purpose of this is to kind of relieve the backup pressure, say, someone who's trying to get on Central, Brand, pushing them down towards the Glendale on-ramp?
Well, there's a couple of different ways you can think about it. That's one option, is that you could potentially, instead of waiting for the lights and the ramp on Brand to clear, you could drive this frontage road, and you could exit, or enter the freeway going eastbound at Glendale Avenue, and you could just be running parallel to the freeway the whole time, so that whole time you're queuing, you're sitting there. As I said, this alternative doesn't make any sense if the way to get to the Glendale ramps requires you still to dogleg somehow at some point onto Duran, and then back into the residential neighborhoods, where Duran is kind of playing that role already, where you do have a decent amount of the office traffic that sort of just drives down Duran to get to the Glendale ramps and avoid Brandon Central. So, if we were to pursue this frontage road, we'd want to have an option to be able to relieve that pressure that's coming into the neighborhoods. Another option is, with the frontage roads, is it may just provide more capacity and kind of lane widths on the main line of the freeway, or parallel to the main line of the freeway, so that the meter point could actually be pushed further down. Right now, if you're getting on Brand or Central, you know, that meter is pretty much just before you merge into the main line of the freeway. If there was more kind of off-ramp space that occurred in the right-of-way of the freeway, that meter point potentially could be moved another two or three blocks down, so there's more queuing space within the freeway, without necessarily trying to connect the two off-ramps.
And what about the fear of people trying to bypass freeway traffic, getting off and using that frontage road to kind of get ahead of everybody else? I know that...
You feel like my taxi cab driver did in Austin, where he kept getting off the freeway, because the freeway's congested, and he kept getting off and back on, and back off.
Right, or, you know, I know in Pasadena, you know, that's an effect that happens, because it's bottled, like it's really congested on that 210, people can see, oh, the freeway is really jammed, and they just all pile onto this frontage road.
Right.
So there's that impact too. I don't know where the benefit will lie with these frontage roads, but that's another, that's another point people will take.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it becomes a mini freeway, isn't it?
It becomes a mini freeway.
And then, and then there's a loss opportunity of all that frontage road, that there really isn't much happening on those frontage roads, on the sidewalk, I mean, on the street. You don't even want to...
Our parks consultant, parks planning consultant that's working on the Space 134 project is not in favor of the frontage road option, because why are you building this park and then putting a freeway road on right next to it?
Exactly, yeah.
It sort of seems to be counterintuitive. One of the advantages that, since we are updating our traffic model, as we move forward in the next round of the Space 134 study, which if the council gives us the blessing to keep moving forward, will begin, will be the 2016 study, it'll be much more in-depth engineering analysis, in which we will hope to come up with some alternative options for the geometry of how these frontage roads might work on Space 134, and then plug that into the traffic model and see what happens. See whether we do get the traffic relief we think we should get out of these, or are we just generating more problems? At this point, it's a schematic that seems to make some sense, because it works in Pasadena, but could have worked in Glendale. We haven't analyzed yet.
So this freeway cap study, is this, this is active right now?
Absolutely, yeah. We are concluding Phase 2 of this study. Both Phase 1 and Phase 2 are very modest grants that came from SCAG, the Regional Association of Governments. The first study was really a kind of pie in the sky, proof of concept, just sort of what could it possibly look like, and what could it possibly be? And kind of how big might you imagine it? That sort of gave us the boundary definitions between Central and Glendale Avenue. Phase 2, which is concluding this year, was focused on doing some more, doing a little bit of public outreach to kind of gauge community interest, both in thinking this big as a kind of project, but also a little bit about what kind of programming might be desired in such a park. That allows us to sort of fine-tune a plan, mostly for the purposes of developing a little bit more finer-tuned funding analysis. The other component was, of this phase, was a study of the economics of this. Not entirely how much would it cost to build, but how does one go about funding the construction of one of these kinds of parks, and also the long-range operating costs? There's about 10 to 20 different similar parks across the country that we looked at to see who had good funding models for building and operating these kinds of parks. And so the question to be asked there was, is this something that's within the financial reach of the city of Glendale? And right now, the answer seems to be yes.
Is there any public transportation considered in this concept at all?
Yeah, absolutely. Metro, and there'll be a future slide, Metro is actively studying the North Hollywood-Pasadena corridor for a BRT route, so the piece that's between Brandon Central, which is that little dogleg to the, that little rectangle to the far left, that would potentially include a transit stop as part of that future Metro service. So depending on where Metro ends up with their recommendations on that service, one option is that, basically, there is a portal from the park at the level of Brandon Central that basically set of stairs that takes you down to platforms that are in, at the freeway level, that allow you to access the buses. So in effect, it's sort of like a little mini subway station. So that, that's one option, but it depends on where Metro lands on, kind of how they propose the alignment for this particular corridor.
So, this is studies being done, Alan, to eventually present to the City Council?
Yes, we are tentatively scheduled to present our latest round to the City Council on January 26. So we have updated versions of these renderings and these plans. We have some feedback about what the community interest is in terms of this park, kind of And the sort of, as I said, the sort of conclusions about how one goes about building and operating these things. Typically, other cities that have built these, there is a combination of federal, state, and local money in the construction. A city seems to do these projects entirely on their own dime, they're always partnered with other agencies, that's where the transit component becomes very interesting, or the freeway frontage road, potentially if you can get some transit, transportation money out of this. If there's transportation project associated with it, you can leverage that money against other sources to build the park. And then the most successful examples from an operation standpoint are public-private partnerships, in which at least 30 to 50% of the operating costs of programming the park is undertaken by some sort of private, usually a nonprofit group, that can accept philanthropic donations. Typically, you know, big philanthropic organizations don't write checks to cities, but they will to a nonprofit when they can get the tax benefits out of that.
Where is Brand on that visual?
Let's see, this for the viewing public, oh, you can't see it. Well, there's a north-south street on the far left, and then the next street over, yeah, that's Brand. So you have Central, then Brand, and then the next street's, it's gonna be Louise. No. Yeah, that's Louise.
So the cross-section that I'm seeing, I can see where the arrows are, they're looking east, it looks like, right? The cross-section?
Right.
And then if I look up at the sketch, the cap and the new elevation is up above where the cars are? Or is it...
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then the lower part is where the freeway is?
Yeah. And that sort of triangle zone is what's the current sloped embankment on the freeway. So there's that space that's not being utilized, that either you carve out and provide additional space for the, to the freeway, at the freeway level, and/or you sort of cap over it and use it for space up above at the street level.
Just for curiosity, this, is, does that become, that's Glendale's land then? Once you cap something, is that...
Interesting question.
Yeah, I'm just curious, is that a, is that purely Glendale's land, or would that be shared with county?
State.
State, right. Who, who, how far?
The, well, once you get outside of the security fences or the sound walls, and you're in the freeway zone, that is Caltrans right away. So, constructing anything there requires Caltrans approval.
Even that high, I mean, is there...
Yeah, the air rights says Caltrans has the air rights. So, pursuing one of these projects requires the participation of Caltrans and effectively their permission. So, at this point, there's a number of cities in the region, Santa Monica, Ventura, downtown LA, Hollywood, are sort of looking at these different kinds of options, with SCAG sort of being the broker, if you will. We haven't really come to a conclusion yet with Caltrans about how this would actually work.
So, I'm just thinking, kind of out of the box, so in that capped area, let's just say there was development of some money or revenue generating locales within that area. You know, who would, that's an interesting question, is, you know, who would be the recipient of that, of that money? Who would it...
Yeah, our, the models we've seen from other cities, Dallas is an excellent example. The revenue that's generated off of some space that you could lease, for example, in the park amenities, whether that's a restaurateur, or you've got a event space, or a bandshell, or kind of park landscape that you could rent out to private events, or, you know, some sort of special event, that's going to pay you a lease arrangement. That revenue comes back into the operating company.
Which, which could be a public-private partnership.
Yeah.
An entity that puts it together with the city, and maybe the county, but then there's a public entity that, I mean, a private entity that is engaged in the financing.
Right, so those, that's kind of the way we've modeled it out from a financial standpoint, is we're expecting that there's some modest amount of revenue that comes off of the operation of the park that helps offset its costs of actually operating it.
So what, what brought this to the table versus enhanced transit for the city? I'm just kind of curious. What, it sounds to me like this is being driven by the notion of the mobility of cars going east and west, and, and to alleviate traffic, but the cost of this versus the possibility of enhancing public transportation in connection to the entire system that we have in our county, that we're cer, that currently our city is missing out on? How does this get prioritized? I'm curious.
Well, this project was outlined in a downtown specific plan as a possibility, and then when SCAG provided these grant funds to do certain kinds of projects, there was a good match between exploring this project in greater detail and the particular kinds of funding that SCAG is doing. SCAG is actually actively funding all the freeway cap park projects in the region. They've got a particular interest in promoting this kind of project, along with a variety of other projects. So we had actually proposed a number of grants to them, some went for more transit-oriented, and this was the one that they gave us funding for. So that being said, part of what we're looking at here is the possibility of using this project to enhance transportation and mobility goals for all modes. So there is an option that says maybe there's a possibility of improving freeway congestion, and frankly, probably not so much congestion on the freeway as congestion on Glendale's north-south streets. But there is also options to sort of say, how does this work for some sort of east-west transit connection? And so the position and plan that's evolving out of this is that Brandon Central, this kind of hub component should definitely be a transit hub, and that if there is a, some sort of east-west, North Hollywood-Pasadena fixed transit route, that should be one of the stops. And by making that one of the stops, it becomes a device by which we can leverage those transportation dollars to help do this project. Primarily, the project is really seen initially as being a parks project. It has this sort of advantage of being a fairly large piece of land. If you do this entire project, it's close to 30 acres. So it's a pretty significant piece of potential land that is in some of the most densely populated portions of the city.
There's a similar one being studied, if not further developed, I think, or maybe further developed, is in Los Angeles, near the, near Union Station.
Right.
Right.
And everybody's looking at transportation dollars as a way of funding these, so you always have to turn it into somehow it's a transportation project, because that's the seed money, if you will, to get the construction costs going. So, we'll have more information on this, and as I said, some updated studies and kind of alternatives, January 26, when we present to City Council. So as I mentioned, when we developed the mobility study in 2007, there were some long-range capital improvement projects that were 10 years out that we've yet to do, but they're very expensive. There was also a couple of items that really weren't on the radar or screen at all. We adopted the mobility study in, I want to say it was March of 2007. Steve Jobs introduced the first iPhone that June. Put that in perspective. The iPhone and the whole smartphone technology and all the information we have at our fingertips was not part of the equation when the mobility study of 2007 was adopted. That has dramatically changed the sort of transportation landscape. It's also important to note that Measure R, which is the big sales tax measure that's funding a lot of the transportation improvements across the county, including in Glendale, was not being talked about at that time, and of course Measure R2, which is a successor that may be on the ballot in November 6, 16, also not part of the equation. So there's a huge funding stream of options with these Measure R and potentially with Measure R2, that was not evaluated in mobility studies being possible sources of funds. So, from a staff perspective, we think the mobility study is a very important document, but probably belongs now in the special collections at the library and not on planning shelves, because we really need, just need to move beyond it. So, some of the technologies that really have, that the smartphone in particular is enabled, that were barely scratching the surface or non-existent. Zipcar was one that was talked about in a mobility study, which is some sort of, you know, various kinds of shared car clubs that you can be a part of. There are two or three Zipcars parked at 400 North Brand, and I presume that there are a few people in that building or in the downtown office building who are Zipcar members. That means, you're not familiar with it, you basically log onto Zipcar with your password, and you have an account with them, and you can log up and say, I'd like to rent a car. Zipcar, you walk down to where the Zipcar is parked, it's got that green logo, you flash a key fob or something, and then away you go, and you return the car when you're done. So it gives you the mobility options of that extra, the second car, if you will, without the obligations of owning it. I want to say Zipcar, I met somebody at a conference recently, I think they said they need something, they need a couple hundred members per car to make the economics of it work. So with all the new downtown residential development, every one of those buildings has two or three spaces dedicated for shared car, on top of what their code-required parking is per X number of units. So there are options for Zipcar to expand, we know they're interested in... So there are options for Zipcar to expand, we know they're interested in expanding. My guess is they're probably seeing people move into downtown apartments as being kind of like, they're sort of pro forma customer. There's also a couple of locations near Occidental College and Burbank and lots, once you get into Pasadena and downtown LA, for Zipcar where it's currently located. The other technology or kind of, if you want to call it a technology, but service, Uber and Lyft, where you can call up a car off your smartphone, and then somebody drives you around, it's sort of basically kind of private taxi, if you will, has all sorts of complications, of course, with the taxicab industry and the regulators. So regardless of what you think about, they're sort of how they operate in their business model, they were not in existence in two thousand and seven, they were not in existence even three years ago, and they have dramatically changed how people get around. There's probably three times as many Uber vehicles available at any given moment than there are taxicabs. So they're quite ubiquitous.
I just read or heard that Seattle just made a big vote today or yesterday to?
Yes. Yeah, they're allowing Uber and Lyft drivers to unionize.
Right.
Yeah, there's been a recent study that, conducted by Uber, of Uber drivers that say they all love working for Uber.
They all what?
They all love working for Uber. Everybody's a little skeptical about that report. There are a lot of cities that are struggling to figure out how to deal with Uber and Lyft. So probably Glendale's gonna wait for somebody else to come up with a model that works that's been challenged in the courts, and then we'll adopt it.
There's also, I learned today in the city of Toronto, one of these two companies is launching another program that is kind of like a bus service, where one driver can take as many people that fit in the car down a certain corridor, and they get dropped off, and they walk to their workplace or their home.
Yeah, Uber is offering, I want to say it's called Uber Hop or something like that?
Yeah, I think that's it.
Basically, the description I saw on Twitter was something like, Uber allows you to, will have a service where you can walk to a particular stop, location, at a particular time, a Uber driver will pick you up with a lot of other people, they will drop you off at another predetermined stop, that then you can walk a few blocks to wherever your destination is. And the reaction was, that sounds a lot like regular bus service.
Well, when you live in Glendale and you're trying to get downtown, you don't want to sit on the bus for fifty minutes. It does sound very appealing.
The other thing that really is starting to change the landscape quite a bit, but nobody has quite figured out how to deal with is self-driving cars. Google, of course, is pioneering this. Volvo has got a new model of this sort of hybrid self-driving car. Everybody in the planning industry, that sort of thinking, transportation planning industry is sort of scratching their head going, we don't know what this is gonna mean, so.
Yep.
You know, that will probably change the environment quite a bit. And then there is personal rapid transit, which I know has been presented before to this commission, which is that kind of monorail system on the right is another technology that's kind of on the horizon. Again, these were things that were not part of the equation in two thousand and seven, when we last looked at transportation options in the downtown. There are some traditional technologies, sort of streetcars and trolleys that are, were part of the technology list, hundreds of years old, but, you know, these are other options for enhancing transportation mobility that Glendale can consider. However, it's worth, before we start thinking about and proceeding down a path of trying to figure out how we're gonna get a streetcar or a personal monorail system operating in Glendale, to understand how our transit system currently works and what we do have. This map is Metro's fifteen-minute service map. This is, in theory, according to Metro, you could basically walk to any of these routes during regular business hours, and you can catch a bus or a train within fifteen minutes. You don't need a schedule. Glendale is up there at the top, there are only two routes in their system map, fifteen-minute service map that run through Glendale.
But what's MetroLink?
Yeah, I'm not sure, actually. The San Fernando corridor is actually mostly buses. I'll show that in a moment. So this is looking a little pale, but this is a map of Glendale, with the various streets and stuff labeled, and the freeways are called out in white, so they're a little bit of a void, the city limits are kind of highlighted, and that's sort of pale.
It looks good.
Okay, as long as you can make it out. So from a regional transit perspective, this is what we have. As you said, we've got MetroLink that runs on the edge of the city with a stop, very south end of the city, and a stop in downtown Burbank, that's not too far from certain neighborhoods of Glendale. And then LA DOT runs a commuter express route that is mostly freeway-running with limited stops, so it does run down the one thirty-four freeway connecting us to Burbank and Pasadena with a stop at Brandon Central. There is that service running already today. So this is what exists from a regional transit perspective. You can overlay on that two options that are being considered. One is high-speed rail. Of course, if you're following the high-speed rail discussion, their plans do not include a stop in Glendale, they will stop at Burbank Airport, and then the next stop south will be a LA Union Station. And I want to say the next stop north is all the way up in Palmdale. So obviously, high-speed rail, in order to be high-speed, has very limited stops. So that's, you know, from a statewide macro-regional perspective, what's being planned.
Excuse me, speaking of high-speed rail, I heard on radio about a few weeks ago that they're trying to dig through Angeles Crest Mountains over there, just through Palmdale, how much it's gonna cost, there's a study.
Right.
What can impact something like that is gonna have to Glendale and our two stations?
What you're referring to is the studies they're doing to try and figure out how to connect between Burbank and Palmdale, and there are a couple of tunnel options under the Angeles National Forest and the San Gabriel Mountains, as opposed to running up the same pass that the five and the fourteen is following, which is kind of where existing MetroLink train service is running now. It's a far more direct route and less impacts in certain neighborhoods if they tunnel under the freeway or under the mountains. They pick up a lot of time if they can make that straight run. I don't think that's gonna have any impact on the Glendale route. The way High-Speed Rail Authority is studying it, they're looking at that Palmdale-Burbank segment as one study, Burbank to Los Angeles is a separate study, and they sort of pair up at the airport.
In terms of congestion, traffic, that has, it will not affect us, if you don't think?
No, I think what's likely to happen, and some MetroLink staff, planning staff seems to sort of be thinking about this, is that when high-speed rail begins running service between Palmdale to downtown LA Union Station, MetroLink no longer needs to be that long-haul service between the high desert and downtown. They will probably become much more of a local feeder service. They do apparently have a good amount of traffic between Santa Clarita and the high desert valley, so they'll probably still be running that route. But one of the things it opens up the door for is that they no longer, right now, MetroLink is limited in the number of stops they'll do because they're trying to make time for this long-haul service. But if the long-haul service from the high desert valley is being handled by high-speed rail, potentially MetroLink between Santa Clarita and downtown LA could add a few stops and become more like, a more localized service. So that's kind of an option that some MetroLink staff is starting to think, how do we do this? But those conversations are extraordinarily preliminary. High-speed rail needs to be up and running first.
Thank you.
And there's a lot of skepticism about whether that'll ever happen. But it's being actively planned. Then there's the North Hollywood to Pasadena bus rapid transit. This is an alignment that, as I said, Metro is actively studying, their recommendations is expected by the end of next calendar year, so probably by this time next year, they'll probably have a formal recommendation to the Metro Board. In the short term, however, and I believe this service is expected to start running in March, they are gonna be running a pilot service along this alignment. And I say it's in March because I think it's time to begin running service when the Gold Line extension out to Azusa starts running revenue service.
Which is first quarter of next year.
Yeah, like I said, I think it's March or April when it's expected to begin. So this will connect from Delmar Station to the, if the Gold Line in Pasadena was a stop at Brandon Central and one thirty-four freeway, through the media district of downtown, and then terminate on the west end at the North Hollywood Red Line Station.
So it'll take surface streets and then the freeway itself?
Yeah, you could see on the graphic, a good chunk of it's gonna be freeway running. It's running parallel to the commuter express service that LA DOT is already running, so it's gonna be an interesting study, because between the two, with slightly different service and different alignments, it's not real clear how Metro is gonna get an accurate reflection of what the ridership potential of this route is by running the service. One of, I just, you know, as an aside, one of the challenges of that corridor is that the jobs destinations are scattered all over the place. So there's a huge question that happens, once you get past Glendale, you're heading west, you go up to downtown Burbank and the airport, or do you go to the media center? How do you get to North Hollywood? Metro staff at this point has a dozen different options that they're looking at. There are, this is where the, where the fifteen-minute service comes into play is with the metro rapid buses that are running today. These are the red buses. So they're running on surface streets, they are running parallel on the same route alignments as localized service, but with limited stops. So there's two metro rapid services running through Glendale right now. The seven ninety-four runs up San Fernando Road, and the seven eighty comes out of Pasadena through Eagle Rock and Colorado, then on Broadway in Glendale, turns south on Central, heads out of the city, going westbound on Los Feliz, and ultimately takes you out to West Hollywood and, or to Hollywood and beyond. These two routes have pretty significant ridership, actually. So you can see where those kind of regional connections run. And then Metro's local buses, the orange buses, run on those same routes and then some, and these of course stop whenever there's somebody waiting at a stop, or they flag them down, and they pull the bell alarm to stop, so you can see kind of where all the metro-local service goes, it's pretty extensive. There are two or three metro-local buses that will take you from downtown Glendale to downtown Burb, downtown Los Angeles. But depending on what time of day it is, it can take you up every sort of an hour to make that trip down San Fernando Road, where you're stopping every other block. So here's the combination of existent, of the transit service that we have in Glendale from high-speed rail, MetroLink, commuter express, then the planned North Hollywood-Pasadena route, pilot route, metro rapid, and then metro local, and what will come up next in very faint pink is our local Beeline service. Beeline, by the way it is funded and designed, it is funded largely by Metro, and so Metro gives us money to run the Beeline system, to fill in the gaps that Metro isn't running. So we are really thought of as a feeder system to all this, a local feeder system to these regional routes, is kind of how the Beeline system is funded and kind of designed. If we were to say, we wanted to say, let's run a whole bunch of service on Glendale Avenue or Brand Boulevard with Beeline, Metro would look askance at us, because they would say, well, we already run that service, so you're duplicating our service, why do you need the money? Essentially. So you could see at any rate kind of where the Beeline service sort of plugs into this. So we're gonna go through the routes on Beeline, and we're gonna start by the routes that have the least number of riders, which is that packs per hour is passengers per hour. And you'll see as we go through the specific Beeline routes that the numbers, passengers per hour, increase as we go up through the chart. Routes eleven and twelve are the MetroLink connectors, so they go to the Burbank and Glendale MetroLink stations and connect into the business districts. They are timed to connect when the trains arrive, and they really, they only run on a sort of peak hour commute service times, which is, so you know, your early morning and then your late afternoon, is why their ridership per hour tends to be a little bit lower. Routes one and two are a kind of joined routes that run in different directions on the clockwise or counter clockwise loop on Brandon Central from the train station up to Stocker, so you can really think of them as one route. So you can see their ridership numbers, so that's the connection between the downtown core and the train station. There's a number of Route threes of different iterations, so there is, thirty-three, thirty-four is a route that we run under contract for Lockin on a Flint Ridge, they pay us to run their local bus service, which runs Foothill Boulevard and connects JPL to Montrose area. So it's a service we run on their behalf. Route six is Colorado Avenue Boulevard, from one end of town, east to the west edge of town, twenty-five riders an hour. Route seven is more or less Glen Oaks Boulevard, with a kind of dogleg into the Disney campus and kind of that area of the city, and then terminates at the college, Glendale College. So this also serves Hoover High, so that's one of the reasons the numbers start to get high, is there's a good portion of our Beeline riders, our students, going to either the high schools or to GCC. In fact, when you look at this ridership data on this route, basically in the morning, everybody's getting off at Glendale College, loading up as they go along, and kind of as you're going eastbound, everybody's getting on that route, and they all get off at the college, and not a lot of people getting on the westbound routes in the morning. So the ridership data really tells you this is a kind of commuter service to the college. The main line, Route three, goes from the Central Park, Central Library area of the downtown, and heads north up through Montrose, and then connects up to JPL. So this has pretty high ridership data, although a good portion of the riders on this route actually get off at the college, so we do run a Route three that's a short line. Route five is specific avenue, north and south through town. Route thirty-two is the short line for Route three, so that only goes from the downtown up to the college, so you can see that has some pretty high ridership numbers compared to the other routes that go through the downtown. And then our most popular route in terms of ridership per hour is Route four, and that's a loop through the southern portion of the city on Broadway and Chevy Chase. So that's that kind of little purple route. And that route is busy all the time. If you get on that route at three in the afternoon, you see plenty of people boarding it, it's a real local, it's a local circulator in the kind of pure sense of the word. Whereas if you get on Route one or two at two o'clock, three o'clock in the afternoon, you might be the only person on that bus, its ridership is higher in the evening and morning peak hours. So we had, when we gave this presentation to the City Council, we had promised that we were gonna do one of our Work Boot Tuesdays with them on transit, we were gonna put them on three or four of the bus lines that were outlined here, and actually sort of show them how to use the bus, how to use next bus service, how to navigate the system, as a sort of giving them that firsthand experience on transit, much like they've gotten firsthand experience going to the crime lab or to the power plant, and so we're gonna show them kind of firsthand experience on the buses. That was scheduled for November seventeenth, the day we gave the presentation, we were told that was getting delayed. We're currently scheduled to do this on January nineteenth. So that'll be Tuesday afternoon on the nineteenth. So where we ended in November with the City Council is we made a request for them to approve a seventy thousand dollar contract with the consulting firm Nelson Nygaard, who's done certain, considerable amount of kind of mobility consulting with us over the years, and in fact, wrote the original mobility study. And what we wanted that contract to do is to develop a downtown mobility report card. So much like a report card you would get at school, where you'd be measured against, you know, getting scores in English and math and science, et cetera, this report card would look at a number of data sets for different kinds of transportation data points. So one of those points would be parking occupancy and surface lots on the street in the city's three parking structures. Another one of those data points would be traffic counts. As part of updating our traffic model, we did some updated traffic counts where you actually put the real rubber hoses out in the street and count real cars. We did that in March this past year, so we have recent data from a number of about fifty different locations around the city that we can feed to the consultant. We do, as I mentioned, every two years, we do bicycle and pedestrian counts, so that information can be included. Transit data, who's getting on, what stops, the busiest stops in towns, how many, are they popular for people getting off, popular for people getting on, or mixture, even mixture of both, all that sort of stuff. So what we were interested in is sort of taking a lot of this data that we already collect on a fairly regular basis and handing it over to our consultant team and saying, please start analyzing this. Tell us, number one, are there any trends that you can discern from this data itself? One of those trends that we might be able to sort of discern, and this is where a good chunk of the cost comes from, is we've asked them to do, our consultant, to do on-street parking counts in the neighborhoods surrounding the downtown. We don't have any effective means of collecting parking occupancy data on those streets, short of putting people out on the street and sort of counting cars. And you have to do that on a number of different occasions to get a good data set, so there's a lot of cost and labor involved in doing that. But what that will allow us to do is then begin to determine But what that will allow us to do is then begin to determine, potentially determine amount of spillover parking the downtown is generating. So for example, one way you might be able to determine that, and this would be a correlation, not necessarily a causal understanding, would be, let's say you do the counts in the business hours, and surrounding the office complex, you've got a lot of demand in the on-street parking, on-street parking in the neighborhood. Yet the parking garages associated with those office buildings is sitting relatively empty. And then on the weekends or in the evenings, the demand for that on-street parking drops down. Then you might be able to make the correlation and say, it looks like a lot of people should be parking in the office, parking structures are parking out in the neighborhood. And we can then sort of investigate a little bit further. So we think that's really important. The other advantage with Nelson Nygaard is they've done similar policy studies across the country, so they can begin to compare us against kind of pure cities. Cities that are similar in size, have a similar kind of mobility picture as Glendale. How are we performing against those other cities? At this point, we don't really know. So, you know, one, one point I can offer from, that I've heard from conferences, is that somewhere around 3% to 5% mode share on bikes in a downtown business district is doing very well. So if all the people are kind of coming to your downtown, if 3% to 5% of them are using bikes as their primary mode of transportation, that's a pretty successful metric by what cities that are doing well on bikes are doing. City of Portland has stated ambition to go to 10%, and everybody in the industry is really thinking that is incredibly ambitious set of goals, to get to 10% bike share. What's the bike share in Glendale? We actually don't know. So one of the questions by working with the local Go Glendale TMA and their survey data is that we'll begin to start to get a flavor for what that mixture is. So this will allow us to have a baseline that then we can begin to compare future policies. So we'll begin to say, have we even achieved some of the expectations we had when we adopted the 2007 mobility study? Are we off the mark? Are we close? Do we need to adjust our policies and our programs? And we think this actually would be a very useful metric if we continue to do it every other year, every year. In some ways, this report card is only gonna be really valuable if it's the same methodology at the same time, and the same reporting is kind of done successive years, because then we could begin to see some sort of trends and be able to measure the influence of our policies. So the council approved this contract. We actually already had it budgeted as part of the department's kind of contractual services budget. With a certain amount of money that was appropriated when the council adopted the budget for contractual services, so there wasn't a specific appropriation for this. So it was already built into the year's budget. But the council did have to approve this contract, which they did. We hope to kick this study off very soon, probably first thing next year, and hope to have a report back in front of the council, hopefully in time for the budget cycle of next year, when they begin the budget cycle. So it may inform some of their decisions about how they wanna, how the council would allocate funding as part of the budget, and their, as that is a policymaking tool. So that's kind of where we're at. And that's the, that's where we ended.
Very comprehensive presentation. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from commissioners on this? I have a couple.
Okay.
Please. First of all, I wanted to compliment the, there are some really good visuals here, but the latest ones that you showed where you were able to show the, the transit and how it's connected, that one and then all the other ones showed the beginnings of what looks like a really good multimodal transportation in our city, except for the, in the light rail not being part of that.
Well, compliment, the compliment on generating these maps needs to go to Justin Robertson in our office, so.
Well, it's easy to read, and it, and it certainly shows the, the routes by ridership and, and also where they happen, and the fact that animating them at least helps, helps me see a good understanding of that. In the study that's being done, that's been approved by the board, by the city council, will they be, you said here, looking at comparing against other cities for mobility? Will they be taking a look at the fact that this city is not well-connected from the point of view of light rail, given other cities? Because now that these other light rails are opening up, especially like going through Culver City and everything, it's amazing the, the pluses that that's having for the communities. And I'm, or is this only using as a datum the original study?
Well, we have yet to work out which cities in particular we would look at. When we did the 2007 mobility study with Nelson Nygaard, there were a number of cities that we examined as being kind of good role models. Boulder, Colorado was one. And the reason for that is it's in the orbit of Denver, not terribly well-connected to Denver. Denver Transit does most of the kind of regional transit, so they don't have control. Boulder itself, the city of Boulder doesn't have control over their regional transit equation, much like Glendale doesn't have control over our regional transit. Similar population size. So Boulder was an interesting model. I would say probably another one, there's maybe like Tacoma, Washington, and Metro Seattle might be another interesting model we'll look at, or Bellevue, Washington. Nelson Nygaard has a branch office in the Seattle area. They do a lot of work in Seattle. They did the Seattle area comprehensive transportation plan. They know the region very well. And I know as Seattle's transportation, fixed rail transportation network is expanding, there are some fairly large cities, not Seattle, but larger secondary cities in Metro Seattle that are not part of that mixture. So those are the kind of cities that I think we'd be looking at being as reasonable models. Because Glendale is in an interesting position, in that we're a fairly large city, but we're the small city in the county. It's a big bulking neighbor over here, and there's a different agency that we don't control that runs the transit system. Whereas like Denver, or Dallas, or Houston, there's one big city, and they run the transit system, so they can make decisions fairly effectively.
The big system you're talking about is Metro?
Yeah, well, and Los Angeles throws around an enormous amount of weight, obviously.
There are other cities in our county who are actually less populated than we are, who have four or five stations that go through their cities. I know they make connections further, but there are some cities that have two stations, three, four, five.
Right.
And it just seems, again, like if we're talking about not just downtown mobility, but overall mobility, which I think is the title of the whole report, it's not just downtown, because you can see the connection with the beeline.
Right.
That goes to residential areas. But I think the emphasis to get a better connection to the light rail system, I think, should be a part of this, at least saying something like, it, it seems like we are not planned well for the future relative to that connection.
Yeah, the original 2000 study, '07 study was really just focused on the downtown.
Okay.
And this report card, the sort of scope of that service, this study is really just the downtown. That's, that's what we have funded for.
But we do have a number of thousands of residents coming downtown that.
Right.
Need to find public transportation.
And this particular study is really, it's just a report card. It's just evaluating data sets of what is happening today, not to make major policy recommendations.
No, I appreciate that. I was trying to find.
This is, yeah, this is intended to serve as a baseline for having a discussion about policy.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Yeah. Alan, thanks for coming. This was very informative presentation, by the way. And going back to, it's called the CAP project, and the, and on-off ramps, and one-way streets which we, which you presented. I guess the challenge which we have is the east-west and north-south transportation in the city versus Pasadena, for example. Where in Pasadena, they have a lot of north-south streets and east-west streets, and they're fairly long and not windy. I think the side streets, good, good extension or the Sanchez Street extensions were probably something viable, that without cutting through, it's gonna move, alleviate a lot of traffic from downtown. Just, or when people exit, they just continue going straight and make a, go down, whether it's Maryland or Geneva, or wherever they want to go down to. Now going back to the CAP, what other amenities are you proposing, since you are the stage two of that study? Are they gonna have parking structures over there? Are they gonna have bike stations? For example, if we go to Santa Monica, we park our cars and get a bike and get around. If, and out-of-towners, are they gonna, are we gonna have such amenity? For example, I live on the other end of the city. I'm not gonna get a bike to come down to Americana. But if there's traffic, I will park my car over there, take the kids with a bike, go Americana. Are we gonna have such amenities over there, both on the CAP and downtown, for example? Is that part of, or is that within the study?
No, it's, it's within the study, although the specific programming is somewhat vague still. But one of the things we've talked about with it being a transit hub is that there ought to be some sort of bike station, bike facility. So it's, it's, becomes a sort of classic first mile, last mile problem, in that if there was a transit station at Brand and the freeway, for ex, as part of the CAP park, you're three-quarters to a mile away from the Americana. So it's literally that first and last mile from your destination, if it's the Americana, is pretty much literally a mile from the transit station. So you gotta traverse that last mile. So part of the discussion is, yeah, there should be one of the bike stations or bike share hubs could be there as part of that park. The entire acreage from Brand and Central is just shy of five acres, so it's a fairly decent-sized footprint. So there's a number of different kinds of amenities that could be programmed there. That particular location, Brand Central piece, which is thought of as being phase one, at the moment, we don't have any parking for cars programmed into that. There is two fairly large parking structures, north and south of the freeway there, that is part of the office complexes that, you know, on weekends is sitting completely mostly empty. So one thought has been, those are parking resources that, especially on the weekends, we could potentially take advantage of, maybe out of some sort of cooperative agreement with the corporate office tenants for naming rights for the park, or some element of the park, or some other sort of participation. So that'll be part of future discussions with, as we move forward in the sort of studies and kind of operating models. The portion that would be east of Central, that would potentially be more in the heart of a kind of existing residential neighborhoods. You know, people have raised the issue of parking multiple times in different meetings, and it's something that we do need to take a look at. There's gonna need to be a balance of how much parking do we provide, of doing a big infrastructure project like this, you know, versus the cost of it. You know, if it's, it's cost very expensive to build a park, a facility like this, and then to sort of give three-quarters, or half, or a quarter of it to be free parking, may not be the best kind of investment, ultimately.
It doesn't necessarily have to be free, and bike could be one mode of transportation you could have, if it's seniors, for example, out-of-towners are coming in, they can also park and take a beeline, or some other transportation mode to get to Americana, for example. The only reason I said bike, because I have children and will do it, but what if it's some seniors wanna go to Americana or downtown Glendale, get entertained? Also, speaking of the east-west, what's, for Metro, for a bus, for a golden line connection, for example, red line and golden line connection, how is exactly that's gonna be utilized as a hub? I mean, even though you said the, but what's, I mean, the buses are basically gonna park, get off the freeway, get on the, park over there, and then drop on-off passengers, or how is that?
Well, it partially depends on where Metro lands with what kind of routes they want to do, because some of their route alignments run north-south on Brand Boulevard, and sort of dogleg on surface, run on surface streets, not on the freeway. So they've got a couple of different options. Assuming a freeway-running alignment, one option is to do what they do currently, which is they get off at Brand or Central, that exit, and there is, the commuter express, for example, has a stop on Sanchez and a stop on Good.
Yeah.
So that's an option. Another option that would be considerably more expensive would be to build some sort of platforms for the buses down at the freeway level, so they don't have to navigate the, getting off the freeway and then getting back on. They could just pull off, have their own dedicated stop. An example of that might be like the Silver Line buses, which runs down the 110 freeway south of USC, for example. If you do that run, when you're headed out to the airport, you see there's all these bus stops in the middle of the freeway. So that's, that's another option that we will explore as part of developing a kind of schematic geometry of how such a CAP park might work. So we can demonstrate to Metro that this is an option for them. But Metro, as I said, at this point, they have something on the order of a dozen different alignments that they're looking at, because they're very early in their study. So whether they're running on the freeway or not, they haven't decided.
The reason I said that, we go, what if someone wants to park their car, get a bus, use public transportation to go to work outside Glendale limits? And will that be, are we gonna have enough parking for locals to use as a hub?
That's, that would be a question if Metro does kind of pursue, depending on how Metro goes with their study, we could begin to look at that. Part of it is where they go on either end, whether they're taking people to destinations that Glendale residents are trying to get to. So they may end up running an alignment that say, when it heads out to Burbank, goes in places where not very many Glendale residents actually want to go. So there may not be that big of a rider, or kind of parking demand for people from Glendale who want to park there and then get on this bus to take that service, either east or west. And that's part of Metro's analysis, is to figure out their sort of ridership, their ridership models, and they have their own kind of studies that they use to sort of analyze how ridership models are done.
Actually, I was nothing along Burbank. I was thinking more like along Pasadena and Azusa, because coming in the morning, west traffic on the 210 is horrendous, and like, same is true when you're going east. And that means there are a lot of traffic, might be locals going back and forth through, like Azusa, or Glendora, or Pasadena, and so forth.
Yeah, I mean, what, what Metro is, their modeling that I've seen, and their analysis, is that there is a good amount of traffic in the Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena, kind of tri-cities area. Basically, a third of it is just running back and forth between those three cities. There is a good amount of traffic that is coming from outside that region, like Warner Center, further west, or Azusa and Points East, that's coming through that area, through that study cor, across that corridor. So you end up with, it's roughly a third, I think, of that traffic is originating east of Pasadena and ending in the tri-cities area. Another third is coming west of the study area and ending in the study, in the tri-cities. And then there's like another third that's staying in between, and there's relatively few trips that are going all the way across, it turns out. That's their preliminary kind of studies, so. But this is all kind of the analysis that Metro would have to do, to figure out, as they're trying to figure out which alignment they're gonna run and who they're servicing. Because there is, there is an equation that they're looking at, where they can run a route that sort of hits a lot of job centers, but it's a very circuitous route, and the timing to make that route may make it such that somebody from Azusa will never use it, because it'll take them all morning to get to work in Burbank, if they've gotta take the scenic route through all the job center in Glendale, for example.
Any other questions from commissioners, comments?
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you very, very much for a comprehensive presentation. I'm sorry.
Sorry, just one quick question.
I apologize.
No worries. Thank you, Alan. So will the South Glendale Plan, and maybe you can just remind us of that and how that's going, will that kind of update the mobility plan and the downtown plan? Or how will those interact as these updates are being considered?
Well, as a reminder, this, this South Glendale Community Plan will be the general plan, or an out, partial, a quarter of the general plan for the city. We're working on a strategy of four community plans. We adopted the North Community Plan, which is basically everything north of Spar Heights about three or four years ago, and then started mapping out a strategy to do the South Glendale Community Plan, which will be everything south of the 134 freeway. And at some point in the future, we'll define the rest of the city into either an east plan or a west plan. So there's four plan areas, conveniently named by geography. The South Glendale Plan, if we stay on our current schedule, will probably be out for public review next summer. Our, our hope is to have it in front of commissions, probably late summer, fall, maybe, sort of the strategy. So we'll probably be starting to do a lot more in the way of sort of unveiling that plan, or some of its recommendations, and its kind of studies, and sort of alternatives, starting next year, after we get through the holidays. That plan will not look as comprehensively at transportation as maybe the original downtown mobility study did. It will look comprehensively at transportation. It will have various kinds of recommendations for transportation networks, but in some It will have various kinds of recommendations for transportation networks, but in some ways, it's going to be a compilation of a lot of policies that thus far have been scattered in multiple different documents in different departments. So for example, it will incorporate the adopted bike transportation plan. It will, depending on its timing, incorporate elements of the to-be-written pedestrian master plan. It will incorporate specific recommendations that you see in the current circulation element as it relates to kind of roadway widths. It will incorporate various policies being developed for the B-line and transit. So it will reflect the current thinking that metro has on their alignments, and it will correlate those to various kinds of land use decisions and options. Ideally, you would like to see this adopted concurrent with a new comprehensive multimodal plan for the city. I think probably what will end up happening is that comprehensive multimodal plan will follow after the South Glendale Plan. In some ways, the new mobility plan for the city will be the product of a variety of smaller-scale, more focused elements, starting with the bicycle plan, moving on to the pedestrian plan, transportation, the transit plan. As those plans develop incrementally, we keep layering them on top of one another, so they inform, they're informed by the previous plans. In a few years, we'll basically be able to put them all under one binder and say, this is the comprehensive mobility plan for the city. So it's definitely not being done in a vacuum of different plans, but the ability to put them all together and do one comprehensive plan in one shot is beyond the capacity of staff and the funding resources we have right now.
Thank you.
So hearing nothing, any other comments or questions? Thank you very much again for the presentation.
Welcome.
Covered a lot of good material for us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So we're going to move to agenda item number five, comments from commission members or staff. Any staff comments first? Yes, please.
Yes, I have one quick comment, if you, if you may. I have been informed by our parking manager that those meters on brands have paid for themselves several times over. So I can answer that question for you.
Thank you.
Great.
That's good to hear. Any other staff comments? Commissioner Yakovian?
Chairperson Gonzalez, if I may. Just a quick reminder that our next commission meeting will be on February 22nd.
Our next meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Any comments from commissioners? Yes, please.
I wanted to inform my colleagues on the commission and staff about SCAG's Go Human campaign. I gave you guys a copy, and I'll give staff a copy as well. Go Human is a SCAG campaign. We heard of SCAG a couple times this evening. It's the Southern California Association of Governments. They recently received a $2 million grant through the California Active Transportation Program as a safety and encouragement campaign. So some of you may have seen the advertisements on bus backs, at bus shelters, either in Glendale or nearby. This is a region that spans all of Southern California, excluding San Diego. So this, this is a program that's designed to allow cities to easily incorporate these marketing materials into their own needs. So if you flip through the packet, there are a lot of different ads that target various audiences. The intent of the program is to promote safe driving, encourage people to walk and bike, and to do those safely. So I'm hoping if there's interest from staff, or if there's capacity to incorporate these into PSAs through city newsletters, on the buses, if we have the ability to do that or have the funding to print these materials. SCAG will, will provide these materials for free. It can be co-branded, as the city chooses to do so, and the material is out there and encouraged for people to use throughout the region. So I wanted to bring that to the city's attention and to my colleagues' attention, because as we all know, there is an ongoing and persistent problem here in Glendale, and we're trying to address that in any way that we can. And this is just one, one small way to do that in a fairly effective way. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I'll leave copies with staff, and hopefully we can continue that conversation. Thank you.
If there are no objections with commissioners, if you could take it to staff and then maybe get a feedback, one way or the other, at our next meeting, please? What staff would think of this?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Good. Okay, any other comments or thoughts? So I guess, first of all, happy holidays to all, and thank you for getting this meeting set up, Anush, especially the work you've done to get this meeting done, and we appreciate that very much. And all those in favor of adjournment, please stand. We're adjourned.